This year, why did we have leftover last year and the year before?
Because we had, the council gave us a nice big budget last year in terms of feeding things down. We had some extra money in there and we were able to make it go a little bit further in terms of what we're at.
Paul, even with, this is an exact quote from the budget. With the budget, even the budget that we have for you today for 2020, there would have been a $400,000 surplus on the 18 budget. And I'm quoting 18 numbers because I don't have to finalize 19 numbers. But that's year end, 2019. Total motor vehicle highway budget was 5.56 million or, no, excuse me, 2.556 million. That was total spent, that total money spent in calendar year 2020. So.
Now, if he was like $100,000 or, you know, somewhere in that range of being close to the edge of not having that money or not meeting his thing, but he's not, he's way over.
Right.
So, we're not moving backwards, we're not taking anything away. It's going to be sitting there if it's needed.
Or he took $700,000 away from him.
He didn't take $700,000 away.
Boy told him he had to cut his budget $700,000.
Even with that, he's still taking in more. We have more budgeted dollars than he's spent. All we did was move the amount that was to be spent without coming back to the council. And the council and you were at some and not at others, so I don't know.
I was at every language.
That's actually, I don't, but that.
Did they take that away?
But we made it very clear that in no way, shape, or form, we did.
Way to get away from him, we took $700,000 away from him out of his budget. Did we not do that?
That's what, that's what we did.
I know when I sat down there, I mean, it's a tough job. I did it before years. Tough job. Our biggest concern was the highway in the road.
And that's our concern too.
And we didn't even give raises a couple of years because we needed to put the money back into the road. And now we got, and I understand, we got the surplus. And you guys are looking at it like, well, we just.
It's not even surplus, Steve, it's the, the money is not being spent now. You could take this money away and move it all to N V H and there would still be money left over. This is math, right?
How much was left over from last year?
Well, I don't have those numbers, I'll have the 18 finalized and I talked about that earlier. There was some transfers after the first many years, so.
To, to get his 733 in the line and leave it those in January or December and those haven't been given to you yet. But that shouldn't make that much difference on what we're talking about.
Right. So, this is calendar year, 28 to the number, okay? Spent 2.556, budgeted amount 3.2 million. There was 600-ish thousand dollars left over. So.
So, even with cutting that budget or taking away, if you say the $700,000, he is still way over.
So, the correct position to take is to say, Paul, we realize that on your chip seal and crack seal and all this stuff, this takes 100% of our, our staff cannot lay more roads in the number of days that we have to work in, that they are doing that, can't be done. Every day, they're laying, if the weather is fit, they're laying as much roads as they can do in practice. So, the correct thing to do for the people out here is say, let's put more people on staff so we can do more roads. Let's, if necessary, hire asphalt company or somebody else to build more roads. So, we can fix even more roads. The correct answer is not take away from the highway department.
So, you think we should do more roads?
Absolutely.
Than 72 million?
Oh, sure.
Okay. And how many did you do last year, Paul?
Hmm, 117.
So, that's, we had to hire, that was with the.
But that's everybody.
Yeah.
That's community crossings, that's consulting.
So, on 2.6 million?
Did so many miles too.
We, we did over, I think we did over 70 miles of chip seal ourselves in terms of whatever. That was a good year and we had some good money and stuff. But part of the thing is, you know, how do you monitor how much money you have on? You're telling me I should be able to spend and monitor every single line item I have to spend with the highway department? There is nothing that is predictable in terms of your line item and how much money you have. Repair parts are outrageous in terms of repairs got to be made and when you go buy parts. I, I don't know, I just, my thought philosophy is number one is I'd rather have a little more money to be able to do what I can do and I don't spend any more money, I don't think in what I need to spend. And so, that's why you have money that comes back in terms of it. I don't, I don't like the idea of this being as tight as it was, it is. I mean, my goodness, if we're gonna go do chip and seal for the county and only do, what's that, 40.3 miles? That's an embarrassment to our chip and seal team, it really is.
Nobody's asking for that, Paul. I mean, there's, there's, there's 3 point, or there's $3 million budget, there's 1.5 million budgeted just in N V H alone. And you're, you're putting 750 on here, but there's more money than that available and it could be transferred wherever you want it to.
Yeah, but you guys ain't all good with guarantees of good grants. Well, I think that's what he looks at too, I mean.
I, I don't think, I, I know for absolute fact, in the three years of, which I've known the council, the highways never had a transfer request there.
And that's one.
Right. And so, I mean, the, the roads are the top priority of the council, we've said that repeatedly. We have a million more dollars there, there, you know, and you're talking about a huge project. All we're saying is you can save this money, get ready for the next big project. If, if, and if you save this money, we're still gonna have increasing surpluses. Even if we shift this 250 from edit to there, we're still gonna have a surplus of N V H budget. And then, on top of that, we've got money that's been reserved that we need for an emergency, that we have, that we need for an economic development project, we have. Because if, if, if state road set, not state road set, but that's a patio. Say the Dayton road collapses, kind of flush, right? Is it absolutely economic development to put it back so that it works and for farmers and the businesses in the community? Yeah, yeah. But we got to have, that, that money needs to be in there to have those opportunities to do it. All we're saying is, you know, there's a lot more money on the N V H side than there was two years ago. And let's budget appropriately for the money that we have and, and, you know, save for the things that we don't know that are coming out in the future, or the things that we do know are coming out in the future from what I've said.
It's not different than what he's doing.
Because this, because this edit money, that edit money is, is, is have more uses.
Spend a year of money before you spend this budget.
N V H has a lot more strings attached to it.
Is he spending the, the edit money before he spends his regular budget?
That's what's happening.
And not even taking consideration, I'm a positive thinking person, but I am, is that we're gonna get this $20,000 in crossing grants. So, look at the money that will be sitting in there, you know, or the money that he can use to do exactly what you're doing, what we're talking about. I mean, we hope to get those grants, but if you don't, the money is still there.
We mentioned, I don't think in any way are you, to be honest, we need to remember that we get that money, that $1 million that we're hoping to get, not because we're good looking, because we're nice people, or we go to church where we get it because of what Paul does to get that money, that's, that's why we get it. If it wasn't for him, we'd have never got any of this money.
We probably wouldn't have this, I mean, the extra money that you guys are talking about now.
Paul does a great job, we're the first ones.
Point of it, that we know he's still gonna do that good job.
Why don't we, instead of saying we're gonna take this away, why don't we sit down and say, okay, he brought up, you may remember something here, 75 extension, that was something that we worked on back there a long time ago, wanting to make sure that the center part of our county was connected to the river.
I totally agree, I think it should be under that whole group.
It should be, okay, we, there, okay, we're coming together here. We really wanted to make sure that we had a highway quality road from Terminus in downtown Camden to the apartment. And we sold that so hard that MDOT moved a bridge so we could get it, so we had a bridge to hook to. And then, of course, we had some people who said we stole the bridge, which, I just, this work, but anyway, and we wanted to replace that one real narrow bridge that's down there.
And you want to talk about a, a building infrastructure that would create an environment for an economic development project?
It's a good one, that whole corridor down through there is a, is a good one.
But the main thing is the money is still there. It's not going anywhere, we're not taking anything away, we're just using a, a kind of a new approach, so like he said, you don't, you don't spend it through the budget. You, you're going to the savings account, but we're not taking it away from the road, we're not taking it away from.
That's still to be done.
That absolutely.
I understand that, he just wanted to take that money and put it in the roads.
Right.
Which is access, access, access right there.
Right.
He just got to have a small account.
No, I didn't.
And, and you're still going to, and like Josh said, I mean, I'm a new council person, but I would never not.
What are the big projects coming down the line that we can do to, to do improvements like 75 and, and other things? You know, he's giving it a thing, but, you know, I want more and better. I just wanna budget for it and save for it and be ready for it when it comes.
I don't wanna get us into the spot where we have, where we get ourselves in trouble. Like when we had to lay off our emergency services, we had to lay off, you know, police department. I mean, well, that's. I worked there, I was there, I was on the chopping block, I was both.
Well, a lot of that is because they didn't touch budget and they made you come in and get additional. So, that's where how we got in trouble and that's what's scaring me here. That's what you're telling him to do, not budget it and then come in for an additional later.
No.
That's.
But he did not use it the last year.
But, I'm not arguing that for me, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, if he did, if he uses all of his budget this year and you want him to come in for an additional, that's where we were getting in trouble back in 2008. Believe you me, I lived it.
Well. Well, we, but Beth, I mean, this is a debate, but Steve, the, the fact of the matter is, before this, there was more being, the highway was budgeting more than their revenue. And that was not fiscally responsible in and of itself. And there was, there was, when we started this two years ago, there were many departments that were budgeting more than their revenue. And so, that's why, you know, this was the last one that we, where we true those numbers. Well, we, we overcorrected, I believe, a little bit, so we are gonna have to look at that because our revenue forecast from AIC was a little bit different than what I think the actual revenue numbers should be. But we'll correct that, I mean, that's, that's fine. But, you know, even if, even with the, the lower number that, that we've budgeted, there's still gonna be a surplus without the edit dollars if we just moved all that over to N V H. So.
Okay, so Josh, you wanna move this 240 to, what did you say?
I would leave it unbudgeted personally.
Edit funds on budget?
Yeah, I would just strike it.
Edit things.
How is it different leaving that unbudgeted and leaving some stuff unbudgeted?
Well, when he, so, as soon as you budget it, it can be spent. As soon as you budget it and we pass it, it can be spent with the way it started. Okay, so if it's unbudgeted, nobody has the authority to have an additional to spend the money.
So, it's just either it's sitting in his bank account or it's sitting in the other bank account, doing nothing?
No.
Either.
No, the, the two, the difference between the two is he can either spend it tomorrow and, 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 or we're saying save it and if an emergency comes, we can spend it, or we'll be saving it with the intent of putting these dollars towards the capital improvement plan.
Okay, so we can, we can not spend the 240.
Right.
And the only way then it can be spent is to come back to the council and ask to spend it.
Right.
Or he can have extra money in his account that he has proven that he has not always spent, but he doesn't have to ask you about it, and that's the problem, he doesn't have to ask you about it.
Well, he has spent it, he has spent the edit dollars.
Yeah, 'cause he comes and asks us.
I'm not talking about edit, I'm talking, you keep talking about all this extra money that he's dropped, right?
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about edit, that, no, I.
Well, it's a part of it, but.
Yeah, the edit, the, the highway, we'll get, we'll get the highway money, right? Um, but the edit fees, if, and that's what we're discussing, if, if we pass your edit budget, he would have access to those edit dollars from that, from the time the council passes it.
Well, you really have to.
And those, and those monies have been spent, except for the one year where it all got messed up, um, two or three, four years ago, whatever it was. Those monies have been utilized, I won't say every penny, but, you know, pretty much utilized before, and that, before the N V H money got spent. So.
Okay. I'm not sure I followed all that, but, but the, the basic question to me is, we have $240,000 to talk about. And I'm not talking about anything else than, but what you're saying, I'm only talking about $240,000.
Right.
Okay.
So, I think what the council, if I'm understanding this right, Bill, I think what the council's saying, as soon as they approve that, Paul comes and gets this money, he spends this money before he spends his other budget. Is that what the concern is?
Last night, it was.
What did? That, that edit money got spent and his N V H money did not exist. Yes, that, that's, that money, I won't say every penny, but I'm gonna say every penny of that could have been spent out of N V H instead of edit.
And you think that the citizens of Carroll County are gonna be happier when we're holding this $240,000, just holding the money, than they are to say, Paul, you spent that money for this?
Well, I think that, that goes into the next thing, that, that both of our bodies have to say, we're gonna dedicate our time and energy to going through this capital improvement plan and putting those monies to use for major projects and things that are gonna have impact on the county.
Okay, I have some ideas on this capital improvement plan, but I'd like to hear yours. What, what all are you thinking in terms of the red fund risk?
In general, or?
The capital improvement.
That's a brainstorming.
Yeah, that's, that's all of it looking together and then prioritizing, but, you know, but infrastructure improvement, I think is absolutely, like the 75 expansion or something in those, in those things. And, you know, or maybe there's something even better than anything doing that.
75 extension program, we may be able to grant some support, you know?
Yeah, that's true, but I mean, there are always massive.
If we have to pay for it, we don't have that money to pay for it.
No, I, I.
There's gonna be lots of grants every year, but what I foresee coming in, new sitting on this council, is that Carroll County has not, they don't, they don't look five, 10 years ahead. And that is why my question, Paul, was what bridges do we have that are, we should be looking at?
I, I have to totally argue with you on that. We have a book this thing that is, on that very thing tells us exactly how much time we have left on this, on this bridge, what funds we're gonna be spending in the future, it, it is planned out perfectly ahead, and then to say.
So, you have that money, you have that money put back already?
Right there.
Right where?
Why didn't have a spot, it was money right there.
You just said that there was not enough there to pay for it.
No, there's not enough money to pay for the 75 extension.
Yeah, you said there wasn't money to pay for the bridge.
And I'm not saying any particular capital project, a bridge. I've seen a bridge and we grow a flood.
Tell me if I missed.
I'm saying is that there's no plan, there's no money, there's no list, there's no 10-year.
I don't give a, no, not here. I can't say, well, we have $2,000. Well, we are gonna have a flood, so we gotta have this much money back for that flood.
But you can start saving when there's surpluses.
Isn't that what we've done? What's the difference?
The, the difference is the edit money is different than N V H money.
Not their bike road out front, it's not. A dollar is a dollar on that road.
A dollar didn't go into that road, a dollar got sent back into N V H budget. A dollar in edit is different than a dollar in N V H, in that, and if, if you're, if you're.
So, what? Paul, thank you very much for coming in.
There's, there's more utilization in, in the edit, you know.
Oh, we have this hazard router.
Edit has a, has a router, but, but those, those edit dollars get spent first.
Then they're gone.
Then they're gone, and then the surplus is going just in N V H, those two should go the other way.
So, basically, you're saying you don't want the money to go to the highway, you want it to go to something other than highway?
No, I'm saying that it gives us the most options.
Gives you the option to spend the money on something other than highway.
Right, but they're, they're not even spending their whole budget on the highway right now.
I don't want them to.
Right. Oh, well, but you're saying that all of this money needs to go in there, they could do that today. It's in no way, shape, or form, is.
So, basically, what he's saying is, they, they don't want us to put this all towards the, like Paul uses for gravel and material.
That's what we call dump truck. Us in the past were a match for that.
Well, a dump truck was kind of an emergency, he, he found one and it was a good price and we approved it. I mean, right, I mean, he bought one, I think it was $63,000.
I think it was.
Those are the numbers that get something. Yeah, but, but that truck, what brand new was double, and we got what we needed in a hurry, team quit ready to do it. And, but what these guys are saying is, if we don't appropriate this, it just sits there, then it's Paul needs to later, he comes in and asks them, or ask us, to ask the council to move that money over.
Right.
They want him to use his motor vehicle money that he has.
He's got it.
Well.
So, is it just a matter of control, you just wanna make sure that you're asked for it?
No, you, they don't come to you, we're gonna be doing the same theory, it'll come to you.
Yeah, we do.
That's the theory of everything.
But if we don't change it this year, are you guys?
We had the same discussion last year, I mean, and that's why I said last year is, you know, we've already bought one more time. So.
So, if you don't approve the edit budget, it's your next meeting, it's, it's everybody's flag, right? So, if you guys don't approve it, nobody's gonna get their money then, right?
Mr. President, can I ask something?
Sure.
We've talked about this one long enough, let's take a break, let's, uh, let's go on to the next few and talk about those.
Another one?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I bring mine up?
Sure.
Mine is the $10,000 S F L E C C Lake Level Task Force. My theory behind this one is, this has already went to court. This has already been judged that it's not going to work. They want these funds, and I know for the lake people bringing a lot of them, but my river people out here in my newsroom, if they wanted to, if they wanted to fight this, are you gonna put $10,000 in an account for them to fight this? It's already went to court, it's already been judged on it, so you're gonna keep giving them $10,000 every year just to put in, to keep paying these high-dollar attorneys to try to fight for something that's already been judged on. And if you are to do that, when the river people start coming and start forming their power, whatever they form, are you gonna put $10,000 into the river folk just because supposedly the river doesn't bring in enough, a lot, that much funding as the lake people? So, that's my thing on the $10,000 is, how many years are you gonna keep doing this? I don't think we do every year.
I was kinda against that myself, because they wanted way more money than that.
And, and that's why I don't know, for different reasons why they still want it.
The lake people too, you know, they say they played into that, so I cut, I cut, I cut a lot of stuff. Explain what that is.
That is the muscles.
Oh, the muscles in the river.
Not once.
Cause I got family that live on the river and they come to me and say, why'd you do that? I'm like, you come to me, I guess I'll be obligated to have to do the same for you, the same for mine.
And.
To fight each other for no reason.
I see that, you know, it's, but it's already written front, I'm not sure if it's a federal judge or what kind of judge it's been in front of, but it's already been deemed that.
No, they're going up to the highest level right now.
Yeah, exactly, which, how many, I mean, they can appeal this and appeal this and run it up and.
Paul also told me they need to raise their fees on the lake.
And that's what my river folks are saying, if they wanna fight for this, then how the lake people fight for it?
They didn't give them anything last year in 2019 and there wasn't anything in 2018.
And I think they asked for $30,000.
I think they asked, but they did not receive.
Yeah, they've asked every year.
But they did get some a lot back, right?
Right, they got.
Somebody, one of my people, um, Don had told me that they had got like $25,000, $30,000 each year, it was the order. So, I asked that.
They did ask for like 20, I think, this year, they did 10 or something.
It is.
Is, is, is it kind of the consensus of the council is not, I mean.
We haven't had a vote on it.
We have not discussed the edit money.
Do you think the council opposes $10,000 going up there? You are.
I have another taxpayer kind of meaning, that is, and this is, there's been multiple taxpayers actually that are, that, the F.
S M B.
That.
What?
No, muscle people have.
No, it's the anti-muscle people.
Yeah. Right, and these are Carroll County businesses or residents that the S up, that have said that they would drag into the litigation over docking issues on the work. And so, you know, for, so for the county to be giving money to an organization that is threatening litigation and hassling Carroll County businesses is a little bit, for me personally.
I haven't heard that, but, but I would agree with you completely on that.
Yeah.
That's not right. And if the council, I think we all three have some prep of issue on this one.
Yeah.
You know, and the, the only thing that, that struck me on it was, that lake is a dynamo of economic money for us.
The A B on that lake is an enormous, that says value on that lake.
Yes, it's huge.
Especially with the survey.
It's, I mean, it's a confused decision, it really is, but, you know, I think.
If, if the lake level is allowed to go down to the point where the lake is really a non-precious lake anymore and they are successful in getting their taxes reduced because they don't live on a lake anymore, uh, it's gonna hurt us. On the other hand, I can completely see how that, that issue is, should be much more important to the guy living on that lake. I don't care whether he's got a $15,000 trailer or a $900,000 house, that issue should be much more important to him than it used to be personally. Not to tell him sitting here, but just, and he should be putting more money into it himself. They should be raising their dues and all that stuff. I agree with that. So, if there's a, if there is a problem with this issue, I'll go with whatever you want to.
Well, when they came in and asked for, when they had a room full of people up here at the lake and they said it was banded and their, their, their walls and stuff, and I told them, I asked them what their fees were for them, I think it was their wall fee. They're going like $20. I said, well, why didn't you melt that up when we gave you the $25,000 the last time? I said, I'm not in favor of seeing this.
They don't remember that. But anyway, don't make any difference, the, the point is.
The point is, is they didn't raise their stuff.
They're not raising their own money.
And I told them, I said, I'm not in favor of giving you this.
And they're all equal taxpayers, they're all living on water, whether it be river, water, be any type.
Yeah, but you pay a lot more taxes up there on that lake than you do towards the river. And if the state keeps doing like, or the federal government keeps doing like they're going to Tiffany County, if you get flooded, you can't rebuild. My sister lives in one of those areas, she's flooded and there's 40% of her house is done, she's got a smaller, she's just lost everything.
Their ground each is $100 a day, that's the guarantee.
$100 a day, it's nothing for them.
Right, and you know.
And they're also getting funding through White County with this also.
For the other side of the lake.
Yeah, we heard that too.
Yeah, 'cause they told us they would go over there, but they, they asked us for $20, I said, I, I'd give you $5. That's what I told them, I believe that's in the minutes if you look.
So, anyway, I, I will completely agree with you, Keith. I, I see your side just, just as plain as I see the other side.
Well, I've got a lot of, cause I'm, I'm a river rat, I play on the river and I go, oh, there they go.
You're a river rat, I have wildcat, it doesn't get swamped.
Sure.
Rock creature.
Yeah, you're a rock creature.
But I, I agree with you 100% on that.
Yeah.
But.
You have another issue that we're.
Very little about that one.
We'll work on that one out.
The, I've had.
The last mine was 2017, $10,000.
17, okay.
So, they come back and ask for the double.
They've asked every year, almost.
Uh, the, I had, as live in Burlington, I had some questions about the last one.
Which one?
The, the Delphi Chamber of Commerce for the old settlers. So, that money, if I'm, my understanding is it gets paid for advertising for old settlers.
For, for advertising.
And, and I don't disagree that that's important, I think that is important, I think all of these little community things are important. But if we tell them yes, and then we tell Berl, or we don't give that money to Burlington, Flora, Camden, and Neelman or whoever, how do we rationalize?
You can't, you, by my, I don't speak for.
It's not just a Delphi thing, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, there, there's one more case, it's not.
But I didn't wanna be the. But as you said, no one comes to my restaurant and floor, a little settler just get one of them.
What's that?
As I said, no one comes to my restaurant and floor, a little settler.
You'd like to close old settlers?
Well, sometimes I know they do because they're closed.
I think the economic development from Delphi is the one.
That's what I'm being.
Your face is red.
I think that should go, it's in Delphi. Delphi gets the economic benefit of it.
Well, they get their own, they get a portion of it.
Right, so I think that this is a Del.
Yeah.
What do you say? That it's a Delphi city?
It's a Delphi, it's a Delphi thing.
The Carroll County Old Settler Celebration is not a Delphi city.
Well, there's no, but the Delphi Chamber.
But the Delphi Chamber is a Delphi.
Gets it going. There's no, there's no events outside of Delphi.
Carroll County Chamber does.
For old settlers.
Well, that's why we gave them that money.
The old settlers. Is only in Del.
Carroll County.
Advertisements.
The only activities are, we created a fund that was so.
And that's been, you know, once along was running.
You're having Burlington taxpayers paying for it.
I'm saying.
On old settlers. But Delphi taxpayers are not paying for it. So what if you send it where you distributed it to Burlington and Flora for advertising?
Here was my overwhelming position on that. Burlington didn't ask us.
Well, I, I don't disagree. Well, I mean, people are talking about it, but.
Well, yeah, but if you say, well, they got money, but I didn't get any money, but I didn't ever ask or walk in the door or propose anything. Well, okay.
So let's just throw this in here also. Let's just pop that to the Carroll, let's just pop this in here too while we're going in. So the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce for their festival, I'm sure some of this one.
They have a festival.
They can.
They can do it.
So you have to be careful what you're gonna pay for, for, you know, that chamber, you know, what they're using for their festivals and their sign in. You know, we're still paying for administrative support through Carroll County Chamber, which, which I believe ten years ago, you said you weren't gonna pay for that anymore, that they were gonna fund theirselves.
They came in here and said for three years, four years, something like that.
Get them running. They wouldn't need us anymore.
Yeah, we need us.
It is worn out. They did back it up.
Yeah, in, in a lot of counties, economic development, like Carroll County economic development, is not paid for by edit budget. It's paid for by the Chamber of Commerce pays for the economic development part. We're doing it backwards to them, and.
I, and as a business owner, I'll just go there, you may remind us on the other, for the, the, the festival magazines and all the advertisement that the chambers do, it would be impossible for our small businesses to put those kind of ads in those magazines and those papers and that. So that is why I don't have advertising. I don't have a problem with, and even if Burlington came and Camden came and they needed help with advertising, I don't have a problem with that. It's the secretaries, the assistants, the, that we're paying for positions that.
Forty-five thousand isn't for you.
It's, it's not forty-five, it's.
How much were you putting into the chamber?
The county chairman is forty-five thousand. It's fifteen for administrative and operations support. Signage and tourism is twenty-five thousand. County marketing is five thousand.
See, I tried to cut all of that because it was supposed to be, like you said, funded, but I didn't want to be the commissioner and says, well, I'm not giving money to advertise these old settlers or help with the old settlers. I didn't want, I didn't want that check mark on my name for counseling someone who's been here over a hundred and fifty years.
Isn't the county chamber advertised for all the different towns and cities?
They sure do. There's pictures of that.
All the festivals.
They got, yeah, they got Cutler. I know that Cutler.
Yeah, the chamber, I mean, she does office hours in Flora. She goes to Burlington.
Yeah.
I, I mean, she does.
She does a very nice job.
She does work all across the county.
If we didn't support that, that would be the one.
Yeah, I mean, as far as what we get for fifteen thousand dollars, I mean, just for the chamber to exist, because, you know, four, of the forty-five thousand, thirty thousand of it is just direct pass-through. I mean.
It goes to all the advertisements, the festival guys, and the.
Right, all of our presence and, you know, Indiana marketing and whatever, or, you know, those.
Where do you have the four, the numbers aren't.
Thirty, thirty of the forty-five is, they take in and put right back out in advertising. Fifteen is.
We're only questioning the fifteen thousand portion is for.
Their advertising is for, but if you cut their staff.
How do you do the advertising?
Advertising, right, several months, right. So, I mean, I mean, you could look at doing a third-party firm to do all your advertising, but are they gonna, you know, do it for the cost that.
No, it's hire, hire it, but, but, you know, the other thing would be, we can, we can put together some kind of a committee that would say, okay, we've got this much money to advertise Carroll County and this.
That's how Florida's.
That's how they got more than you are.
So what do you, what do you want to do with the chamber then? What's your suggestion?
I, I, that's a hard one. It's a very hard one because the Delphi Chamber, the City Chamber is so small.
You want a Carroll County Chamber?
We see, we were told one time.
I, it's just, it's very hard for such as Burlington, Camden, the Delphi Chamber, because we're so small and we're not financially backed. But one of the Carroll County Chambers is backed by Purdue, backed by Ivy Tech. Um, that's how they're, you know, they bought this new building. And my vision was that the chambers would be together and have a visitor community center, and it's just not the way it's, it's planned.
So it's still a Delphi Chamber, it's still Camden.
Well, the new vision, I'll just give you a little new vision of the Delphi Chamber. Um, they are going to start a Delphi Main Street again because of, we'll be able to go after grants, because financially, the Delphi Chamber cannot support itself on Pits King, the Stone House, and, I mean, the businesses just can't support that one. And then also, most of them are also members of the Carroll County Chamber also. And so it's, it's, that's the way that right now the.
So you guys would merge together? Wouldn't it be better?
We can't merge together because Carroll County Chamber takes care of Camden, Flora, Montez, whereas the Delphi Chamber is supposed to be the Del. The Delphi Chamber is going to try to get away from being, the Delphi Chamber become a main street for us to where we can, we can fall for grants and, and, and get some funds come in, because without money, you can't do anything.
That, that was my biggest reason why.
So that's why I don't want to see you cut funding to, if Burlington will come ask for advertising for their festival, Howard County, I mean, I, I think that's great because they.
I would love to support Burlington. I'd like to support Flora. I'd like to support Rock Creek, you know?
I mean, my only disappointment is that we did not get a community center.
Yeah, we did.
We did the sandbox.
They're trying to put a hospital.
A hospital?
It's time to jail. Let's build a hospital.
You better get them.
So does he come in here and say that I don't want to cut any of it?
Huh?
I said, so to come and say I want to cut any of the, the chambers, either one of them, it's, it's a hard thing to do.
But you knew want to?
What you said?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay.
Not to be a, that you sit on one of the boards.
What do you say?
When I've sat down there, I'm not talking about anything, but I was related to it. I mean, I can speak.
I'm trying to get off the board of that, you know, I mean, because I told them, you know, I.
I was gonna say, old settler.
The city one, because I'm on the city business, so that's my only.
Yeah.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
No, they do. Second biggest.
Yeah, and they're cash bound, so I mean.
And I, and that's a sad thing, the, the, the Delphi City, you pay to get for deployment.
I can tell you a story that came to me several years ago, and that one is in fact, if you look back, say thirty years ago, the Delphi Chamber was operating back then, and they went to the Flora Community Club and said, let's go together. Let's put the two together and create a county two chambers type thing. But the problem was, this is according to the core people that told us the story, was the Delphi had about twenty-five hundred dollars in their checking account, and Flora had like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. And they said, and we're gonna unite? No, I don't think so, you know? So that didn't work out. So, anyway.
Well, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, it's very common knowledge that's given, so. You know, just, I agree with you right to the end. If we're gonna, I mean, it's a county project, it's huge county dollars, and I don't think that I mean, that, you know, Flora's not getting a great little benefit from.
From what?
From.
They don't support the old settlers either.
What?
So they don't support the old settlers either. Flora doesn't, Burlington doesn't.
The vendors.
I mean, where are they during this old settler? I mean, it's not, it's just a Delphi thing. It's a Carroll.
It is called the Carroll County Old Settlers. It's not called the Delphi Old Settlers.
It just happens.
It just happens.
I learned about it already. Well, but I.
Myself, and that's the chambers.
Take away the carnival and let it shut down.
I'd say put a carnival for the fairs.
That's why your fairs have died because of the carnivals.
I agree with you there. I, I agree with what you're saying about the carnival here, and I'm not, maybe you make money.
If you take carnivals, you take, you take, if you take away the activity, because you can't, I mean.
Like your kids.
Yeah, it's not like it used to be. It used to be the canal was up.
Carnival, though, they have.
Oh, that is the, that is the major moneymaker of old settlers.
Right, but the philosophy of the old settlers was, it was the old settlers getting together, and that's not carnival, right?
It's my idea, something over here, and they got together, they shared their experiences.
Yeah, we got them written down, and we got them all recorded.
Back in nineteen hundreds, when carnival came to town, that was a big deal. But it used to be, you're right, the iron, the pots and the, all, yeah, stuff that happened in the canal and that was.
I've always loved.
The canal's their own place.
Yeah.
What? Wait, what?
The canal's like their own spot now, and they have their own thing. And the museum used to be here, and they used to have their activities out there.
Yeah, but it didn't work very good because you put, I know my son Ross used to sit out there at Blacksmith on the front corner with Lawrence. Bangable, wonderful man. And right next to him, you'd tell the world with the foulest rap, rap music you've ever heard banging away right, right there. I mean, you couldn't talk to him right there, and.
But the kids really liked it. I mean, they had candle lighting, they had.
I think that, and I think that, you know, there's, you know, G L C has cut back on, Grand Alpha Commerce has cut back on their street fairs. So there's a, there's an opportunity to grow that here and, you know, to give a hell residential growth by doing, to have more, more activities like that. But to say that it's just the one that we're supporting, I, I think we need a larger strategy for, for, for all the.
No larger than all of them.
Yeah, I'll keep it in. I would say I, I, I just heard Bill say that Burlington would come and ask for a thousand dollars from county, you have five. I don't think they said, maybe told them that.
You don't, you don't ask for it here, so. I just have always wished that the, that old settlers would be more like. Old settlers, or like, uh, uh, the Covered Bridge Festival in Rodfield and other festivals that I see that are just unbelievably huge. There isn't a darn tilde world anywhere near.
Well. Covered Bridge Festival.
That's kind of what.
Old settlers though.
It's all tied country-wise.
Size it was five years ago.
But the old, well, that's, a lot of that is because the chicken's not here anymore because of the, um, the church, they took it clear up there. They don't like to go there and then come back here.
Yeah.
Old settlers has moved from being up here in the courthouse a lot or in the church, and they, they're there to.
I didn't know the last couple of years.
So I think that's a, that is true. So, I mean, it's all gone away from here. I think it needs to stay right here in the area so everybody would participate.
Hey, I know the owners. So basically, you guys want to kind of put suggestions down at your next meeting, give it to us, and we look at them?
That's our, the only thing we have to do. The, the chamber said that they go, they make their media buys in January for the summer.
Right.
So if, if. Right, so if, if we wait, if we push that back, some of those media buys might not be available because they go to print early.
That's not true.
She, all the media stuff has been for the sure hits. She left that off too.
I, I don't think that.
Do you win?
Yeah.
All the books and everything are not in March.
They're already paid for for this year or last year?
I don't know if they're paid, but they're all, they're all in the air present at some point.
So why don't we don't put money into it?
Yeah.
Then she would have to come out and play with it.
This is the worst thing. This is, that's the worst.
I mean, that, that would be the only consideration as far as what you need to look at.
When you say that won't happen, they, the permanent chamber has a huge business that's greater. They have funds. They're backed by things that you're getting paid for, but I don't think we should do it, but to say that they wouldn't.
I like to. I, I think I could down it. I mean, I, I don't have any other stuff that you have.
You guys don't even.
Maybe you all. You guys, so, I mean, it's up to you guys. I mean, we, we could say, i- if we have to wait, it'll be first week of, first meeting in March before you guys can hear it, unless we call a special meeting. If, if, if we had to have our meeting, make recommendations back to you.
Well, I don't need to sound rude, but you guys are the ones that got the issue with our edit funds. I don't need to have a special meeting and get it to us before this February third. I know I'm pushing it really hard. I don't know, I mean, to me, I, I don't agree that way. Today's the point first.
We can call, we can call the.
What?
Hi.
And I mean, I, I, to me, to me, it sounds rude saying that, but you're the ones with the issue with it, with the points and stuff. We thought we was doing a good job. You, you advertised with some corrections, and we can look at it then.
We, that's, would this have, would this have to be re-advertised? Or because it's less, we've, if, if, if a line was stricken, would it have to be re-advertised? Okay, so.
It's already been advertised, but it was advertised for.
It's been advertised at a higher amount, so we could pass it at a lower amount.
It was advertised for your last meeting.
Right.
In January.
Oh, it is?
Sixteen.
Right.
But it was tabled, so it can go to the next.
So what, what I'm saying is that the commissioners took action, and let's say there's six items, and three of the items were.
No, it does not have to be re-advertised.
Discussed. You guys could pass what there was no problem with, and then the, you know, or what nobody had.
They can change their edit.
I thought it was all or none.
You said it was all or none.
It is all or none.
They see cameras, two, two, three of them, and then so they're gonna have to, what they want you to do is tell them what you don't want, so then they're gonna decide, and then they can change it all around.
If they so desire.
When you advertise, you just advertise the amount, right? You don't advertise the lines.
Debbie Becker, all right, what is it, Deb?
I think, I think that, I think it was by line item, wasn't it, Beth?
I thought it was line item too, what I said down there.
I just put it in your minute, your agenda as line item.
Okay, but when you advertise, it is advertising lines, okay?
Yeah.
Most of the, during our session. Ethan, you can come my house and change my water pump for me. Oh, I forgot.
What statistics you have at the Covered Bridge Festival's fair?
That is half its size.
Where?
When, when I talked to the people down at the.
Well, my son goes, my oldest son goes there every year, and his, he just keeps going straight up on sale.
Well, he probably does keep going up on sales because the vendors keep going down.
Most of it's socks, shirts.
So there are a lot of it.
They don't have Rishon, and maybe they do it in Mansfield.
No, the true Covered Bridge one that.
Right, all, because all of us is. Chinese vendors and salesmen socks and Indian clothing. That's why I think, that's why most of the vendors all moved to Rishon from Brant to Mansfield.
Became Chinese people coming in with boxes, banana boxes.
Pretty Chinese stuff.
So the people that are still doing it and still making money, but they are making more money at the festivals because not as many people are going. The last few years of our festival circuits, even locals, have been twice as good because people aren't doing it as much and they're not on so.
I would go in this one, Jim.
Yeah. You like your banana boxers?
Oh, yeah. My wife gets that, I mean.